Is it, it was connecting, tell me when we're live.
I will, the little bar's going across after an initial Bone Hill blip.
Okay. Thank you for your assistance, you two and.
But, oh, okay. We're live.
Okay.
Right, okay, well, we'll proceed. Well, good evening councillors and to any members of the public who've joined us this evening. Welcome to Faisley Town Council, October 2020 council meeting. Present, we have councillor Brian Holt, councillor Margaret Holt, Bob Youngtown Clark, councillor Alex Farrell, councillor Subri and councillor Olivia Sheppard with us, so we are for it and we will proceed. Bob, first of all then, can I have a list please of any formal apologies?
We've got Joe Atkins and Jean Down, that's all I've received. Unless there's someone coming.
No apologies from any others then, other than Joe and Jean, who we know haven't got computer connectivity.
Yeah, that's it. I'll just check in on my other one, but.
Yeah, sometimes I've received late emails, but I've seen nothing so far.
No, nothing on my other one.
I'm just gonna quickly double check email while we're waiting, but.
No.
No, I have nothing on emails, so apologies from Joe Atkins and Jean Down, so thank you for that. Right. Next item councillors, with regard to the minutes of last month's meeting, the non-confidential section of last month's meeting. Are there any comments please before we take these as a true record? Councillor, Mrs Holt.
Yes, I have. Could I draw your attention to 200 and G? I'm afraid you've spelt my name wrong. Which is quite minor.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. And also, I've got another query. Two, 203, and it's the reminder about the bagged waste bins. It doesn't state what bin it is. Is it all bins or just the recycle bin?
This is 203A, reminder about the bag waste. It says bag waste must not go into bins.
That was the heading on their notification actually, but that's all that was put on there, Margaret.
Okay, so we don't know if it's all bins or just the recycle bin?
Yeah. The, you know, that was, as I say, I just copied their heading.
Okay, it's a bit misleading, I think, really.
Okay, well, that's a fair comment, Bob, but yes, I agree with Margaret that it is a bit misleading as to which bins they mean, but if you could make a note of the. On the amendment please, Bob. Any comments on the minutes, on the non-confidential section minutes please councillors?
Happy to move them.
Okay, so thank you for that. If, so proposed by Alex, could I have a second or two move those? Thank you, Olivia. Proposed by Alex, seconded by Olivia then, Bob, that the minutes of the non-confidential section of the previous council meeting are taken as an accurate record, so thank you for that. So that's item, item one. Item two, police matters, any issue, any updates on police matters please, Bob?
Yeah, unfortunately, I've had a little bit of contact with Maggie Grippis and, but she is not working, this is, she, you know the shifts, the police has these shifts that I can never work out, but she's not working today, hence she couldn't come to the meeting. But we have had, I'll just mention something that I did outline to the town mayor when this happened. Up at Mile Oak Recreation Ground, we did have a member of the public objecting to the closure of the gates as he wanted his son to undertake training on the BMX track. I did explain that we have to make decisions that benefit the majority as against the minority. And he did say he was going to contact Maggie about it. But I spoke to Maggie at the end of last week and he hadn't at that time, so that's all I've got to report on police matters.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Bob. If that closes out police matters, that's item two. So the next item, three please, is on progress report and actions please, Bob.
Yeah, if we go to 197 actions. I, I've got a telephone meeting on Wednesday of this week with Louise from Kirkwells to have another go at doing the grant application. I did have a go, but it got returned, well, it got rejected basically. So she's gonna work through with me as to which box I ticked incorrectly. So that's on Kirkwells, that's to officially apply for a grant for Lothian County. On the additional notice board, I always give Onker a ring. What he said to me is that we are getting nearer on this. He just can't make his mind up on the layout of his advertising on the side of his building, very nice chap, Onker. And he said, he's got to agree, agree the advertising area that he's got with the his contractors that he has appointed, or he's got contractors lined up. But he said, you know, give me a ring again in a couple of weeks and we can, I'm sure we can finally get this space for the notice board. On the next one, website, I don't think there's any need to keep that in, is there, Olivia? We could take that out now. Because you're, you're doing the minutes and the agenda on there, so that could go, couldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So basically, Olivia, each time Bob produces the minutes and the agenda, you just put there, you, you, you put those on the website as appropriate for the month?
Yes, they just get uploaded onto the document section.
Okay, and I have to apologize, I didn't clock the front of the website. Do you actually update the website to say the next meeting will be on such and such a date, so it does clock forward?
Yeah, and there's a permanent link on there now to the YouTube account, so for anybody that may have missed a live stream of the meeting, they can go back and watch the previous month's meeting as well.
Okay, okay.
So if they just click on the click here, it'll take you through to all the videos.
Okay, okay, well, thank you for that. So that's, as you say, that's an ongoing activity, so we don't need to review that subject each, each month.
Okay, and then of course the town hall painting, that, that's been, I think that's gonna be on hold until next year now. External painting, because the weather's too not appropriate really for the painting. You know, that's been deferred 12 months really. Moving down the page, we get to the clerk's report from last month, Remembrance Sunday. I've had a word with, well, I left a couple of messages and the vic of from St Paul's came back to me, Jonathan. And he did, he did say to me, he was a little bit unsure as to how it was going to work out this year as regards to the Remembrance Sunday. He did say he'd come back to me by Friday with an email that he was going to send to myself and to the town mayor. You haven't received anything, have you, Brian, at all?
No, I've not received anything from.
So this week I'll make contact with Jonathan. I know that from other people I've spoken to, it comes down to risk assessments and doing a risk assessment for any gathering. And there's two sides to this. I don't know what they're doing in the church, although Jonathan did say to me on our telephone conversation that there was a limit of 40 in there and they couldn't have more than 40 in the church. And, but I'll chase him up over this week and see what, what he's got, what he's got to say. On the war, sorry.
Can I just butt in there a second, Bob? I'm just thinking that, I'm not sure which is the closest Sunday to the 11th, which will be Remembrance Sunday, but it might precede our next council meeting, might it not?
Ooh, crikey, I didn't think of that one.
What I'm thinking is that any decision that's made will have to advise, possibly advise councillors by email because the, you know, this, if, if there is an activity at Remembrance Sunday this year, it could precede the next council meeting. I'm not sure. I should have checked that.
It's the 8th, so it will, it will proceed, yeah.
It's the 8th, is it? Okay.
So the meeting, our meeting will be on the 9th and the Sunday is the 8th.
So we don't know whether there'll be a gathering at the War Memorial or how it will proceed. I guess if there is any gathering at the War Memorial, it'll have to be reduced numbers with, you know, social distancing, but of course the church is driving this, it's their, it's their service, so.
Can I just make a quick point, Brian, about the town with service? So they're not doing a parade this year, but, but the, the local dignitaries, if you like, will be dropping a wreath on, on the Remembrance Sunday in some kind of way, but there won't be an organised parade, but there will be wreaths laying. And I suggest maybe Faisley Town Council still lays a wreath, but just doesn't make a song and dance about it. And you can't stop people coming down. If people want to turn up and pay their respects, then they can, can't they? There's an space in that square. I would suggest we just lay a wreath as we normally would, but just with yourself doing it maybe.
Well, I'm happy to do that, of course I will do, but because generally this is organised by the church and we fit in, we'll await to see what their request is, but if there is no activity, no official activity at the War Memorial, you're quite right, Alex, I will, I will arrange to lay a wreath at some point, so, and others may wish to do as well. And on that score, Bob, could you, I'm not sure if you've got one in hand, but could you arrange a wreath for me please?
Yes, of course.
So at least I've got that, but yeah, thanks for that comment, Alex. We'll wait to see what Faisley Parish, Faisley Church say. And otherwise we'll just, as you say, informally lay a wreath at the War Memorial.
I'll get one, yeah.
Thank you. And as I say, if there, if there is an up-to-date statement from the church, because this precedes the next council meeting, we'll let councillors know by email. Okay, thank you, Bob, on that one.
Thanks for on the War Memorial, that one, I've spoken to them, so the National Association of Memorial Masons. These are the ones I've been in touch with. I sent photographs to them and they've distributed the photographs to, I think, three of their members to come back with ideas and take to the next stage of getting quotes. But they haven't had a definite response from the three that they've approached. I spoke to them again today. But they've assured me that their, their members, their three members will be coming back to us, but it's just that they haven't come back yet.
Okay, 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 so we're waiting for the number of masons to give us quotations and then we can move forward.
Yep. On the maternity nurses, the youth annex, I, I haven't spoken to them in the last 10 days actually, but I think that's, it was, it appears to be working well. I think we, we had to get a non-slip mat in the doorway there because a lady coming, a pregnant lady coming there nearly slipped over when, on one of those downpour days that we had. So we've got a non-slip mat in there and I've discussed this with the, the town mayor, looking at the possibility of just getting a small heater to top up the heating in the youth annex for when the winter period starts. The, the wall heaters will supplement it, but it does get cool in there, so we're looking at that. The bollards outside, next one, the bollards outside the jet garage, I had a site meeting with the traffic management, two from the traffic management. They tell me that two more bollards are going to be put in there and they're going to discuss with Tim Hemmingsley the location of the two existing bollards, which I must admit, Mike, I'm not an expert, but I do feel that it's a little bit close to the curb to discourage people parking on the pathway, which forces members of the public to go onto the road, difficult for people in mobility scooters and try to see what they can do in that. But two more bollards going in. I also did have a long, took them up to opposite the boathouse. That's where the parking is on Litchfield Street. There's a weird situation that the yellow line suddenly stopped down as it's coming down the canal bridge on the Mile Oak side. And people are parking in the gap where there is no yellow lines. And the traffic management, the two there, said they couldn't understand why it stopped and we've never been able to understand it. It's particularly dangerous because when there's, they can get two cars in that gap. And if a vehicle's coming from Mile Oak and goes around those two vehicles and then we've seen it time and time again, somebody coming off the island going up the canal at about 40 or 50 mile an hour, there's a very high risk of a collision and actually the traffic management team did agree it's very high risk. But what the problem is, doing something with yellow lines is quite expensive. But they're going to take it to a meeting with Alan, Alan White to see what he thinks and what could be found or what can be done. They didn't guarantee anything. They said to them, it needs, something needs to be done, but it's whether they can get the funding to do it. That's, that's the problem.
Alan being our, our county councillor of course, has funds, so they're hoping that he'll, they'll provide, he'll allow some of his funds to fund these additional yellow lines with any luck.
Yes, or find funds from somewhere else. But it is, it is bad. In fact, while we were there, somebody came along from Mile Oak and went round the vehicle that was there very slowly and somebody came over the top of the bridge and, you know, it's so easy to see what's gonna happen if we don't discourage them from parking there.
I mean, it's a route I use personally, a lot travelling from Bone Hill down to Faisley. And I've been held up there a number of times and it's not that I'm complaining about being held up, but it is the danger of overtaking because if somebody flies over the brow of the canal bridge, they don't see you until, until they've, they've come over that bridge, so it is potentially dangerous and it's crying out for double yellow to be streamed all the way along, so thank you for that. We, we just hope that Alan White can assist us with some funding there.
Yeah. On the mill house, I finally got hold of one of the directors of the company that have taken over the Tolson site, who is very informative. And he, he shared the view of the town council actually, that the site should be finished and something done with the mill house. What he told me was that his plan, there's two companies now own the site and there, there's two, two building projects going on there. He told me as regards to the Tolsons Mill, the actual mill itself, he wanted to secure the roof there because he wants to make sure it's watertight, safe, et cetera. And he's already gone out to contract with a company regarding the roof. And he also said that he's seeking quotes from appropriate companies to demolish the mill house. And he said his target there was to have the mill house down by Christmas at the latest. So I did actually mention this to the leader of the council and the town mayor as regards to our visit we're having from Doug Pullen. That he may be aware of that, but I wasn't aware of that until about five to five tonight. Okay, on that one.
Just, just to embellish that a little further. First of all, thank you for your persistence, Bob, in, in finding these people. Did they, did, did they give you the name of the two companies, the two new owners?
Yes, I have got them and I've looked on the company's house and certainly one of, one of them, the balance sheet is, you know, not very, not very heavy, put it like that. When, you know, when I've done projects in the back past, I've always checked the balance sheet and I looked at their balance sheet and it's looking at 70,000. So I feel that that's a shell company that they're going to then divert it through another company. There just isn't enough strength on the balance sheet, so, but one of the, the biggest company is one called Bama Kirkland, I have heard of those. Bama Kirkland, so, you know, I've got no doubts about them, but, you know, the one I looked at was a very weak, very weak balance sheet.
Well, let's hope that there's more than an element of truth in that, because if they're, if they intend to demolish the mill house with the intent of putting up that contemporary building we've seen in the plans, that will certainly definitely improve Faisley street scene and we should encourage them to proceed. I mean, just for councillors' benefit, I think they're aware that Alex has spoken to Doug Pullen, who's the leader of Litchfield District Council and Doug Pullen, who's gonna come online in our meeting at about half past eight today. The reason being, on the assumption that we weren't going to get anywhere with the developers with a real date to demolish Mill House, we wanted some leverage in getting Litchfield District Council to impose a section 215 notice that we asked for early in the year, which would force the owners at least to put a lick of paint on the mill, on the current mill building, if it wasn't to be demolished, just to make the street seem better. If you recall, the reply we had from one of LDC's directors, Craig Jordan, was that they were unwilling to do it at the time. They didn't think it was relevant because A, it was likely to be contested, well, of course it could be contested. But I found somewhat insulting the statement that they didn't believe that the current state of the building impacted Faisley street scene too severely. Now, you know, I think that's a bit of an insult to Faisley, so the purpose of Doug's visit at half past eight in about half an hour's time was to really get some leverage from Doug as leader of LDC to try and get this section 215 notice n4 or issued and enforced. It may well be that thanks to Bob's good work, that if there's more than half a truth in what the new owners are saying, the section 215 notice may not be required if they're going to demolish the building. Let's hope they are. But at least, and thank you, Alex, for getting Doug to come along this evening. At least if Doug Pullen isn't aware of this situation, we can appraise him of our current knowledge. But really, as a, as a contingency, we would still, I think you would agree, like his, his leverage to, to, to help us get this section 215 notice implemented if the mill house doesn't come down, but as I say, let's hope that this, this current news is, is real.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Bob. We'll move on.
And then on, on the page three at the top there, highway matters, that was, that's one that, Brian, you had a reply on, which I think Tim Hemmingsley kicked the idea of using the, the island of Bone Hill well and truly into the mountains, didn't he?
Yes, just, just a quick update. Tim did look at this fairly quickly. There's a lady in question in Bone Hill who is starting a cycling group, which is to be applauded. There was a possibility of, she was interested in the possibility of a cycle rack on Bone Hill Green with publicly accessible cycles under some form of control. I asked Staffordshire County Council who own, or county highways, who own that piece of land if they would condone that, but Tim Hemmingsley came back and said they reviewed the situation for a number of safety reasons predominantly. It is, although it's a fairly low traffic area, it is a traffic island in the middle of three roads and basically they said no, they wouldn't support that. I spoke to Miss Christine Doyle, the lady in question, and told her that we've had a reply and that Staffordshire County Council wouldn't support a cycle rack on Bone Hill Green, which she accepted, that's fine, but she's obviously pursuing the wider issue of a cycling club in the area and, you know, we wish her every success with, with that club, but certainly there won't be any cycle rack on the green. Thank you, Bob.
That's it actually, Brian, on the, yeah, that's it, on the progress.
Let me just quickly finish my note. Right, thank you for that, Bob. So that's progress report and actions, item three. Item four, town mayor's announcements. I have no announcements this month. Quite understandably, under the current situation, there are no civic engagements planned or occurred in the last month. And as I just made a statement a few minutes ago, Doug Pullen will be joining our meeting at 8.30 to talk about Mill House and thanks to Alex for actually getting him on board in that request and in that to assist us with that. So that's town mayor's announcements. Item five, questions, are there any questions to the mayor, deputy mayor or town clerk, understanding order 11 please?
Not aware of any, Mr Mayor.
Okay, well, if there are no questions under agenda, item five, we'll move forward to the clerk's report then, please, Bob.
Yeah, there was only one thing to mention, that we have been in touch with Mike Deegan regarding the funding that we're looking for as regards to the town hall and we've got a, a meeting arranged with him. He's, he's actually, he rang earlier and he left a message saying that he's got, he's still got to confirm whether he's coming over on the 19th or the 20th. But he wants to meet at the town hall to take some photographs of the hall and the floor and, and the general character of the building so that he can use them on the grants. But I'm progressing, getting quotes. I've given the copy of the report from Jim Huff to one builder and just about to give a copy of the report to two other builders. And we're, because Mike Deegan will need the quotes, he needs three quotes to include with the grant application. That's it, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. So provisionally then, Mike Deegan will be coming on the 19th or 20th to be confirmed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Item seven then please, Bob. Have we had any reports at all from county or district councillors?
We have not, no, no reports.
Okay. Thank you. Item eight, planning then please.
On the planning side, we have, we have a few that have come through, felling of three silver trees at Mile Oak. 155 Sutton Road, Mile Oak. That's been submitted, validated, but pending decision. Direction of a single-storey detached outbuilding in rear garden to form residential annex. That's at 35 Deer Park Road, Faisley, again pending. A two-storey extension to side and rear including Juliet balcony, single-storey extension to rear and installation of a new front porch. That's 11 Sutton Road, Mile Oak. Is that next door to you, Olivia?
It's next door but one, so the other one. They've done a lot of work. They actually put a load of trees down in the garden last week and knocked out the phone line.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, I don't know how they managed that, but they did.
All right. So that was 11 Sutton Road. Then we've got, here we go. It says increased number of caravan pitches from one to two, each accommodating a touring caravan and the erection of a day room comprising utility bathroom, kitchen and living room and associated works. So that must be, oh yeah, pitches, that's for the parking of two caravans, Bonnie. That's 3A Bone Hill Road, Mile Oak.
Is that the, is that the one by the flyover?
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it is, yeah.
Yes, that's the only one that's down there, isn't it?
Yeah, it's gotta be that, hasn't it?
Next to the chickens.
Yeah, and can you just restate that, Bob? It was additional caravan.
It is. Increase the number of caravan pitches from one to two. Each pitch accommodating a touring caravan and the erection of a day room comprising utility, bathroom, kitchen and living room and associated works.
Okay.
So as far as I understand it at the moment, there's one static caravan on that side, isn't there, on the right as you look at it, yeah.
Yeah.
So they wanna get rid of that and make two tours and a little big utility space, basically.
Okay, okay.
And that's it, councillors.
Okay, does anyone want to comment on any, on any of those playing applications at all? Right, let's move on then please. Item nine, correspondence please, Bob.
Correspondence, this is another one similar to, we're on about the bins again. And it says, Litchfield District Council, bin service update. All bins to be out by 6am on bin day. Bin routine set to change, joint waste service. And it says, from next week, we are bringing bin collections forward by 30 minutes so we can have staggered start times for our waste and recycling crews to make sure their working environment is Covid secure. Okay, yeah. Then, then there's a warning from Litchfield District Council, a warning regarding the rise in catalytic converter theft. A warning regarding the rise in catalytic converter theft locally. I, I have heard of that sort of thing, but I didn't know it was going on. Yeah. That's that one. Oh, that's just to show, I'll hold that up, councillors, that's the, the queue for the town hall that's in, you know, the quick queue code that's in the town hall. So that one's ready to go. Uh, Litchfield District Council again, and they're, they're telling everyone about small business grants helps launch marketing success. The ninth round of our small business grant scheme is open and we hear from one of our successful applicants about how getting a grant helped him realise his ambition to become a freelance marketing consultant. Okay. Staffordshire Parish Council's bulletin. It gives details about meeting arrangements regarding, they haven't changed, by the way, regarding the COVID. And website accessibility. Oh yes, I was going to mention that too, you actually, Olivia. There's some new regulations come out, I think, about, um, getting access for people who have disabilities onto websites. Evidently, it's been around for a long time and it came out about eighteen months, two years ago. And nobody knew about it. But as soon as the deadline approached, lots of people realised they weren't aware of these regulations.
Okay.
There's no penalties or anything, but it's to make websites user friendly for people with disabilities, even blind people. So have you come across that one, Olivia?
Um, I've never seen anything like that, but I can do some research into it and see what I can do to adjust the town council website.
Okay, thank you. Wendy Johnson at the Litchfield District Council. And what she's saying is that Litchfield District Parish Forum briefing note, and it's regarding, the, I missed it, it's the joint waste disposal service. I don't know whether they mean there's some kind of joint meeting, uh, joint project with Litchfield and Tamworth. But we have a briefing note saying regarding, I'm able to advise that the range of materials which can be recycled in the blue bin hasn't changed. However, we have asked residents to change the way they present their materials because we have had several loads rejected at the sorting plant due to high levels of contamination. And I, I do know that where I live, uh, they look in all the recycling bins and the slightest thing they reject it. So it must be the same in the Litchfield District. Okay. Now then, this one's an interesting one. Other, uh, letter from a gentleman called Glenn Burgess, no, sorry, Glenn Buglass. And he says, uh, it is regarding several local things. And I'll read you his letter. Okay. What he says, I write to you as I seem to be in some sort of feedback loop, loop with Litchfield Council and the police. Both my wife and I have tried to report two large vehicles that are parked illegally near our address over the past year or so. We live at two twenty-three Litchfield Street. Neither one of the authorities, it seems, wants to make, take responsibility for these vehicles that have not moved for at least three years, referring us back to each other at the mention of illegal parking. The council says it is a police responsibility and vice versa. The two vans, and the gentleman gives the registration, according to an online search, are registered at Sawn. They are parked on Litchfield Street, Faysley, which I believe is a highway. They are opposite two thirty-three Litchfield Street and the postcode. They have flat tyres, one vehicle has no MOT and the other vehicle MOT runs out in November. They should not be parked on the highway as described in the Sawn regulations. They are taking up valuable parking spaces in our locality. I'm sure you'll be aware of the lack of adequate parking in our neighbourhood. Please advise the next course. Well, what I did was, I did send this off to Maggie Griffiths, actually. And she has told me, she has come back in an email telling me that she's going to investigate this matter and follow it up. I also sent it to Tim Hemmingsley and he's confirmed that he's got the, Tim came back remarkably quickly. He's got the traffic management team to have a look at it as well. So that's an ongoing issue for Mr. Glenn Buglass regarding that problem. Okay. Yep. Uh, then we had another one actually from P. Jones. And I'll read you his letter. I'll just search through, through my little file of notes, who, who's come back, yeah. And what he says, for some time I have had concerns for the parking of vehicles on the footpath adjacent to the boat house. This seems to be necessary because of a lack of onsite parking. The planned sixteen spaces being reduced to fourteen by the addition of a temporary office, which seems to have been, become permanent. My original concerns were that this situation would develop to cars parking on the main carriageway in the areas without double yellow lines. And he's right, they are. In fact, this is now happening on a regular basis and due to it being approached, being it, being the approach to the canal bridge, it could cause a problem with upcoming traffic. Further, the situation at times is compounded by vehicles at the barber shop and for the refurbishment of the old chapel on the side of the road opposite. Again, another area without double yellow lines. Would be interested in the views of the council on this situation. And if anything can be done, or is this a matter for higher authority? Well, I did pass it on to our authority, which again, it went to Tim. And in fact, earlier in the meeting, I did mention, discussed it with the two engineers from the traffic management. And that they are taking this to Alan White. Don Wynn on the enforcement came back reasonably quickly on this one. And I've sent this on to Mr. Jones. And he says, having looked at the approval plans for permission, that's for the boat house, there is no mention of a brick building where the car parking is shown. And I've had a look this week and there's quite a sizeable brick building gone up. Adjacent to the brick building, there's a, a container, a shipping container. Planning permission will be required for this building. Google street view images also show what looks like a container next to the building. And it's true, it's there, I've seen it. I assume, I assume this is still in situ. So if so, it shouldn't be there unless it is for temporary reuse. Now, uh, I think it's been there about two years, so that's more than temporary. If there are any car parking concerns, these should be addressed to the police. I will log an enforcement case and will write to the owners. I will update you in due course. So Don Wynn on enforcement at LDC is following up this for Mr. Jones on the basis of the brick and tile building. So a reasonable size and the storage container, well, shipping container that's next to it. So those two are, are in progress.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Only one other issue with regard to correspondence, and I think I copied this email to councillors anyway. You'll recall that we agreed to put the, um, litter bin, the large waste bin on Dunstall Lane in the layby to hopefully focus people who use that pull in to use the litter bin rather than just throw their rubbish, uh, in the grass there. Rob Pritchard of Tamworth Borough Council has come back to us and said that it seems to be successful. And he's not had to litter pick that layby since our new bin has been installed. So he said, a big thank you to Faysley Town Council to agree to fund that litter bin and it's emptying in that particular layby in our area in Dunstall Lane. So, uh, and I do believe I copied that to all councillors by email. So a, a little success story there, although we're taking the cost of funding that bin and it's emptying, it does seem to be doing the job and focusing people to use it rather than throwing their litter away by, uh, on the ground there. So that was from Rob Pritchard. So correspondence, all other correspondence complete then, Bob.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for that. We'll move forward to item ten, town mayor's powers to act. Can you just remind me, are there anything on?
Well, the only, the only thing there, Mr. Mayor, is that I did have a conversation with you and I reported earlier in the meeting that in the youth annex, we, we're looking at, um, getting some kind of top up heater because of the, the, the temperature that'll be in there during the winter for the maternity nurses there. Uh, and we're looking at the, the cost of that. We've had a word, I've had a word with Matt, the electrician. He's going to identify a suitable unit and he can put that on a timer. So, um, the cost of this is within, well within, uh, the limit for the town mayor to, um, give a decision. We haven't had a quota yet. In fact, regarding the heater, uh, Matt, who's an electrician, he isn't that registered. So he's going to give us the details and if we buy the heater, we can claim the VAT back on that.
Okay. Yes. Thank you for reminding me. So we're still awaiting his quotation in that respect.
Yeah.
Okay. So that covers item ten, town mayor's powers to act. Item eleven then, authorisation of non-confidential payments, please, Bob.
Yeah, that's the HM Revenue and Customs five seventy-eight, seventy-six.
Is that all under the, uh, non-confidential payments?
Yep. That's correct.
Um, right, we now theoretically move to the confidential section of the meeting. Alex, um, obviously we've got ten minutes, I guess, before Doug comes online.
I, I have, I have prompted him. Would you like me to give you an update on something else while we're filling the time?
Yes, please. I'm just thinking before we move to confidential, when we switch off the YouTube feed, because I think the conversation with Doug should be publicly available. Please do, if you've got any updates on other issues, please, Alex.
Well, I thought it might be helpful just to give you an overview. Uh, I prompted Doug, by the way, to say we're ready whenever he is. To, uh, an overview of the COVID nineteen cases in the area and what today's announcement by the Prime Minister, um, how it might affect us. So as you know, he's announced that the, uh, the country will be going to three tiers, medium, high and very high. Currently, Staffordshire on, as a whole, is in the medium tier, which is the lowest of the three tiers, which is status quo as we are, rule of six, um, and everything we're currently doing. The issue here, and this is something I might want to bring up with Doug, comes within the separation of the districts and boroughs in Staffordshire. So, um, to give you an idea, Tamworth and Litchfield are kind of average in terms of our cases. We are around about ninety cases per hundred thousand in the population. Uh, and anything generally over hundred cases per hundred thousand, um, would trigger us to go into tier two.
Sorry, what was that, what was that number again?
It's, it's, it's about ninety per hundred thousand in the population. So if you can imagine that, um, Tamworth has eighty thousand population in, in terms of the whole constituency, then Tamworth probably has about seventy cases-ish. But it, but it translates to, to around ninety per hundred thousand. And so a hundred per hundred thousand generally is the, is the limit. If you, if you imagine actually that, um, some places, um, like Nottingham are very high. Nottingham's at, um, around about eight hundred per hundred thousand. Some places in North East are in the two hundreds and three hundreds. So we're, you know, we're, we're quite low on, on the general average. Um, and that actually only equates to about naught point four, five percent, um, of the population. So it's a very small number, to be quite honest with you. But the, the conversation that maybe we have with Doug, and I had this conversation earlier in a Tamworth meeting is, where does Faysley fall? Because of course, Faysley would technically come with the Litchfields figures. But because we are over the border to Tamworth, we would technically have Tamworth's kind of, uh, obdrift and, and population numbers. So that's maybe a conversation with Doug because I know the districts like, you know, um, Tamworth, Litchfield, um, East staffs, Stafford are all going to make their own individual decisions at the moment of what they do as opposed to a Staffordshire wide because obviously we in Faysley have a completely different demographic to someone up in, up in Stafford, an hour away. So I believe that's going to be devolved to the local districts to make the decision. Uh, and we just need to work out as, as a parish, how, how that would affect us and, and what, what Doug's decision would be. So just give me ten seconds either to do.
Well, thank you for that, Alex. Hope, uh, hope you've not disappeared from the scene completely.
Uh, one thing I did forget to mention to councillors that, I don't know whether you've seen it in the press, but some months ago, I did apply to our insurers for loss of income due to the closure of the town hall. And in fact, insurers have took this to the High Court. The High Court have thrown it out and said that insurers have got to recompense organisations such as town and parish councils for loss of income on their parish halls and town halls. But the insurers are appealing against this. So that's, um, you know, in, in, you know, ongoing at the moment. One of the larger town councils took insurers to the High Court as a test case. So if they win their test case, we will benefit from that in the sense we'll be able to claim our lost, uh, income on the town hall. But I have put in a claim for that.
Perfect.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
Sorry, Brian, I'm back. I was just negotiating Doug and Doug is now in the room. So hello to Doug.
Well, good evening, Doug. Hello. Thank you very much for attending, for attending our meeting, Doug. We appreciate that.
Thank you for having me.
Online tonight, just for your information, we've got myself, Brian Holt, my wife, councillor Margaret Holt, uh, our town clerk, Bobby Young, councillor Dubree, uh, councillor Olivia Shepherd and this chap Alex Farrell, whom you know, I think pretty well at the moment. So, um, and, and to those who don't know, Doug Pullen is, is, uh, leader of Litchfield District Council and he's kindly come on this evening to assist us on a couple of matters. So thank you very much indeed. Um, Doug, if I, if I can just kick off, the, the main reason, and I think Alex has already appraised you of this, is that we were slightly unhappy earlier in this year with Craig Jordan's response to our request for a section two one five notice on the owners of Tolson's Mill, particularly the Mill House, which has a large impact on the street scene at Faysley, is very, very scruffy, uh, as possibly can, you may have seen or seen the photos of my email. And we really wanted some legal mechanism to force the owners at least just to throw a coat of paint on the Mill House, uh, to make it look better and improve the street scene. The issue being, of course, although we know that land has planning permission passed and the contemporary building would, it would replace the Mill House as and when development occurs. Up until very recently, there's been no date, this year, next year, sometime, never, as to when that, uh, development would occur. And we know the developers were saying, oh, we're going to pull it down eventually. We don't want to spend any money on the old mill. The concern with Craig Jordan's response was, and we found it slightly insulting, is that Litchfield District Council's view was that it didn't really negatively impact Faysley street scene, which we find a bit insulting because it is a very scruffy building. And it doesn't say very much, that statement says very little about Faysley. So the reason for asking for your involvement was that if we were to pursue or wish to pursue, uh, your assistance in implementing a section two one five against the owners, we really wanted your leverage along with Craig Jordan's department to try and make that happen. However, and I will stop speaking in a minute. However, Bob Young, our town clerk, has found out this very day from the new owners that they are, um, imminently intending to pull down the, the Mill House, demolish it and start that development, which if that's the case, we would applaud that. And clearly the requirement for the section two one five would not be needed. But were that not to happen, were that not to happen, we would like some additional support and leverage to apply such a notice. But at the moment, uh, it may be that that isn't needed. So, uh, Alex or Bob, would, Bob, would you like to just give an update to Doug then in terms of what you found out today?
Yes, um, the, the two companies have actually taken over the site, Doug. And they, he actually gave me a breakdown of what they're planning to convert Tolson's Mill into a one bedroom, two bedroom apartment and also townhouses. And the, the other company is going to build townhouses on the site there. But he was quite, um, he was quite, uh, convincing actually, Doug, that, um, they would be very quickly repairing the roof of the mill, uh, to make it watertight and sound. And he was at this very, at, at the moment. And he was at this very, at the moment, getting quotes in from experts or appropriate companies to demolish the mill house. And he was quite convincing that he, there was a bit of haste there because he wanted to get on with finishing the site and having the apartments and townhouses available. So it was quite a development. I was quite surprised with this frankness because the previous owners, I think they're called Ashfield Land. I mean, you were lucky to even get in touch with them and they never, they never replied to any inquiries. So it was quite a nice change. So I was surprised. I didn't expect it, Doug.
Yeah. So I think there's, so to give you, thank you for that update, by the way, that's most appreciated. So I spoke to Craig via email this morning and got pretty much the same update that I think he'd given you a while back, which is they've been out of site in March and they were assured it was going to be sorted at some point soon. And the Litchfield District Council didn't feel that it sufficiently impacted upon the street scene. So there's a few different issues for me. One is the date. So there's soon and then there's an actual date which people can point at in the diary and and say whether it's happened or not. And I think that's the critical thing for me. Just saying that it's going to happen soon or at some point in the near future isn't, isn't good enough. And so it's really, it's really good to hear that update from you, Bob, that that looks like it's moving forward. I'd still would push Craig to get a date off the developers though, that we can point at. And I think in terms of the section 215 notice, if it doesn't get demolished or sufficiently improved by that given date, I'd be more than happy to support you in that. I think I'd want to just go and satisfy myself because it's a legal test to go and get some sort of case law or some benchmark against what the threshold is that needs to pass before a 215 notice is issued. So I think it might be some clumsy-worded email from one of our officers, but clearly that there is a threshold which needs to be passed upon. When does it sufficiently impact upon the street scene? It needs to be, in his wording, it's a fairly subjective test. So once I can, I mean, if you've got any examples or if I can go and find some, I'd be more than happy to support you on that. Because it's certainly from my recollection, it materially impacts on the street scene. It looks, I'm trying to think of polite language to use, but I can't and I want a council meeting. We look bloody awful. So yeah, more than happy to support you. I'd want to go and just satisfy myself as to that threshold. But yeah, more than happy to.
Well, thank you for that, Doug. I mean, yes, you're quite right. You would need to check the the legal ability to apply that and enforce it. But you know, even today, although councillor Joe Atkins phoned me today just to say yet again, the vegetation and the Budleas are starting to protrude and we have that challenge every year to get them to at least cut the vegetation back and health matters. But that's that's really the tip of the iceberg. As you're well aware, the whole building's very, very scruffy. Clearly, if the current developers are honest and true, and as you say, you want a real date, not soon, you want a real date, we very much support the accelerated development of that site. We look forward to it. And the section 215 wouldn't be applicable. But thank you for your willingness to support us, given the legal threshold can be achieved. You know, we have that backing should this drift further.
Yes, yes. Just, I've just thought one point on that. And Bob, you said you had a conversation with the developers. Was that on site or was that on the phone or email?
It was on the phone, Doug. That was on the phone.
I'm just wondering, could you forward me, I don't know if our planning team, presumably they are in touch with them. I just don't want to assume that. Could you forward me their details? And I'll just make sure that the Craig Jordan's team have got those to hand so that they've got a a hotline into them.
Yep, I'll send those details to you, Doug.
That'd be great, thank you.
Alex, yes.
Are we finished on that? Can I move on to something slightly different?
I think we are. But again, thank you once again for your willingness to assist on that, Doug. So we'll wait to see what happens.
I, I'd like to thank Doug for coming and I'm sorry that we didn't properly have a go at you, Doug, because we've got the result we wanted slightly before you came on. So apologies if you didn't get the roasted. Yeah. And you look fabulous, by the way, Doug. Thanks for joining us.
So are we, are we moving into Faysley devolution now?
But actually, you joke. So I was, I was just filling in the council on an update from the Local Outbreak Control Board about the coronavirus cases. And I was just getting to the denouement of my report, which is that Faysley, Miloak and Great Ambassot are currently on 10 coronavirus cases as we speak. And that's live cases. That's not necessarily, you know, anything else other than that. It's just reported cases. I believe actually Tamworth as a, I don't know the Litchfield numbers, I'm sure Doug does, but I've had one death in the last week. So Tamworth's cases are still quite low. But the conversation earlier, Doug, around on the Tamworth Borough Council side of things was if Staffordshire applies some tier-two lockdown measures, this would probably trickle down to boroughs and districts making their own decisions. So obviously Stafford is a long way away from Tamworth and Litchfield, so our decisions would be different to their decisions. But where would you see Faysley fitting in with these decisions based on the proximity to Tamworth?
So that all depends on, the devil's in the detail on that, right? So I've just come off a call this evening actually with county and discussing how those lockdowns are going to be implemented if we do move into tier two. And I am going to try and coordinate a joint letter from leaders across Staffordshire arguing strongly for a district and borough-led lockdown, not a Staffordshire-wide lockdown, which has been mooted, which means, which is totally daft. You could have an outbreak in Little Aston, which if you didn't define your life by local authority borders, if you live in Little Aston, you live in Birmingham, you've got an O121 phone number, B74 postcode. You have an outbreak in Little Aston and the whole of Staffordshire could get shut down because of that, which is absolutely bonkers. And the reverse, of course, is true, that if it happened in north of the county, the same would be true. So we'll be fighting strongly for a district and borough-based lockdown. Beyond that, and that topic did come up on the call, beyond that, we think it'd be very difficult to police, to enforce, to work and to start then going beyond the district-borough boundaries. So if you started moving down to a more regional locality, so if you said Berwood or Litchfield or Faysley or Wittington, they can have their own mini lockdowns, we just don't think that would work.
No, I agree with you.
So I suppose what I'm really saying is that because Faysley's in Litchfield District, if Litchfield District went on lockdown, the whole of, if you pay your council tax to Litchfield District Council, you'd be caught up in that.
Of course, but theoretically, there could be an outbreak in Tamworth, let's say on County Drive on the other side of the bridge. And technically Faysley wouldn't need to fall into that lockdown, although it's the other side of a bridge. So that's maybe an issue we might need to think about, that's all.
And that's true. And actually, that scenario broadly came up on the call earlier on, where, well, you know, what if you had Cannock and Tamworth in lockdown? Well, and Litchfield would still be okay. Well, actually, the reality is I think that if Tamworth and Cannock were both in lockdown, it would be sensible to put Litchfield in as well as a precautionary measure. So it's not saying every district and borough can just do their own thing. It's saying use them as building blocks to determine which areas are in lockdown. Don't just slap the whole of the county in just because there's a regional outbreak somewhere.
Very sensible. Sorry to ambush you with that, Doug, but you wouldn't expect any of that.
No, it's fine. I was just, I was excited about what the ambush was going to be tonight.
Yeah. And while we've got you, Doug, it's lovely to see you again, I must say. Looking delightful haircut. The north of Miloak, the plan for 800 houses, as you can imagine, there's a lot of
We're getting a bit funny, Alex.
No, of course it is. But before you go, the town council has expressed its opposition to those plans. Any update from your side about them?
No, the local plan process is going through the process. Responses to any consultations are being listened to. We, if I'm honest with you, all I can give you now is is official lines about the process that we're going through. I don't want to disrespect any of you by just repeating those, trotting those same lines out. But the reality is, I suppose, that we get told how many houses we need to find as a district. And we then go through a fairly lengthy process as to where those houses sit. Wherever they go, we will face the same challenges. And it's, yeah, whichever route we go down, we will end up with these sorts of conversations. So I think I'm saying in short, there isn't any particular update. I'd say if there is those sorts of responses to the consultations, I'd keep them coming in. If there's alternatives that you can suggest, then again, I think that helps, helps the conversation to move on. I don't think what helps the conversation is, we don't want it here, put it in Berwood, because that's the polar opposite of that is people in Berwood saying, don't put it here, put it in Faysley. So I suppose it's how do we break that deadlock? How do we add value to that conversation instead of just saying, no, we don't, we don't want it here?
Okay. Olivia, I think you'd like to come in. Thank you.
Yeah, I am. Sorry, just to go off the back of that, Doug, about if we've got any suggestions of where it could be or if there's any other space in Faysley. The last local plan review that went through in 2015, I know it was when I was just elected to the district council and I did a lot of conversations back and forth and a lot of meetups with the planning team. And there was a lot of brownfield sites highlighted. It was kind of spread throughout Faysley, building off existing areas. There was also an area down off the back of Bone Hill that was highlighted. And we'd managed to get, I think it was roughly about 500 houses in without having one huge site which was going to double Faysley and extend it. I was just wondering if maybe the town council could do something with taking the previous local plan, what the brownfield site was, you know, what was highlighted there, would it be helpful if we could maybe resuggest something like that?
If you've got that work to pick up and pass forward, I don't think that's going to hurt any. I think particularly if you can demonstrate that sort of housing numbers being built from it, then yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that would be brilliant. I was just wondering, because it's just, I don't think any of us on the town council are against the building of houses in the area. I think we're well aware that things like that do need to happen. It's just that I think it's the volume of the site in the particular area where it is.
Yes, and I well understand that. And I think in my, I'm not trying to, the process is the process, right? But the process start, this process started five, six, seven years ago. So certainly what I've said to our planners is, I don't want to see any more of this development. I just don't, I don't want to see it. I want us to be doing new developments which are self-sustaining, which are at the A38 or somewhere that is using brownfield or even it might not be technical brownfield, it's currently being used for warehousing or or it's a quarry or a gravel pit or something like that. That's where we need to be building our new centres so that we don't end up just building around the edges, which is what we've done for years. We've built around the edges of every existing conurbation. We can't continue like that. But that direction that I've given to planners last year won't kick in for another, you won't see those houses being built for another 10 or 15 years, that sort of lag on it. So it's it's really difficult when we're at this stage, you know, in a process to then go back and then pick everything because the the planning inspector will say, well, you don't have a local plan now, so developers, build wherever you like because you don't have a local plan. So it's, I know it's, I know it's not, they're not comforting words at all. It's a real, real challenge.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And maybe that's a challenge for us then, town councillors, to look for alternative site or sites to put forward because we've recorded our opposition to the 800 houses and obviously many of the residents in the Miloak region have done also. So that's, they're on record already. So maybe some positive alternative might assist the process. So we need to put our thinking caps on there. So thank you both for your comments. Bob, Bob, would you like to make-
Doug, while we've got you on the screen there, I mean, I'm totally out of touch on this subject, but I just wondered, do you think anything will develop as to a total unitary authority with Staffordshire County Council?
So I've spoken to the leader of the county council about this last week. He tells me that Boris Johnson himself has killed it off from within Number 10 or someone within Number 10 has killed it off. They, both the planning white paper and the unitarisation shift were being driven by MHCLG. And I think with the, with the planning white paper itself was proving too much hard work for them. So to stick in local government reorganisation alongside that was just, it all fell into the too hard pile, yeah. So I think what they, what that process has done is flushed out some authorities which are keen to unitarise. So I think I saw Cumbria and a couple of other local authorities, I think Warwickshire is one of them that's really looking at it. I don't think the government's going to stop them, stop that happening. They'll push that full steam ahead. But you've then got three or four unitaries going through and that's going to keep central government busy for two or three years at least, I'd imagine. So there's, there's no appetite in Staffordshire from districts, boroughs or the county to unitarise. So I would, I would, if you're having discussions about that, I'll take yourself breath.
Just for information, Doug, it's a dead duck anyway, that one.
Yes, I could have just said that, couldn't I? It's a dead duck.
Thank you for that update, Doug. Alex.
I just want to thank Doug and because I know he's had a busy day and apologise for throwing some curveballs at you, Doug. I just know you've got an affinity for Faysley, so I thought you'd love the questions and even more love the answers.
Well, yes, I'd like, on behalf of the council, Doug, thank you very much indeed for attending this evening. We're very grateful. Hopefully the main point of our wanting you to assist, we may not require that section 215. Let's watch this space. But if your planning team can work on the information that Bob's going to send you, let's try and get some solid dates on this development. So thanks once again, Doug. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you all. Thank you. Good seeing you. Cheers.
Right, team. Well, anyway, Alex, well done. Thank you for getting Doug engaged because apart from that, that one aspect, he's answered or commented another few subjects for us. So thanks for-
Sorry, I couldn't help myself, Brian.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine. But thanks for arranging that connection with him. That's good. Councillors, I think we're now on to the exclusion of the public and press. We've we've done authorisation of non-confidential payments. So item 12, exclusion of the public and press, we must ask members of the public, if you have attended by on Zoom, thank you very much for listening to our town council meeting this evening. But I would ask Olivia if you can now disconnect the YouTube feed because we have-